Good evening. Please take this time to silence your cellphones if they are on and be advised our proceedings tonight will be recorded. For those of you physically present in the council chamber who desire to address city council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They are available at the front entrance and present it to city clerk. Speakers physically present and those participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person wishing to speak will be allowed three minutes per item. So right now I will convene the regular meeting of the city council for Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. And please know tonight that we will be closing our meeting in memory of Grand Terrace resident Mark Civicoda. And Jeff Allen would like to say a few words about him at this time.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to real briefly say something about Mr. Civicoda. He's a 28-year resident of Grand Terrace and he was a, he was very active in our community and he volunteered in various capacities, both in the community and in the schools while his children were there, while his son was there. He worked at General Dynamics, he worked for Riverside County, and he worked for the city of Moreno Valley. He also taught at UCR Extension and he worked in their career center. I'm sure he was counseling folks on their future and offering advice and things he had, he had learned along the way. He was a kind man, a loving husband and father, and he will be missed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. And tonight our invocation will be given by Pastor Mark Matthews of Grandview Baptist Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Doug Wilson. If you will, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
While we do lift up the family of Mr. Civicoda this evening who are going through times of pain, pray that your Holy Spirit overshadow them and give them comfort and all the company. And we thank you for your service to the city and all the surrounding communities. I thank you for this night our board to be present in the company of our city council, our mayor. I pray for them to be protected and grant them wisdom. Today is election day here and across the country. I pray that your will be done. And tonight, Lord, I want to focus in on our city manager and I want to pray especially for him, who has a tough job, oversees the city on a daily basis in conjunction with the city council. I pray that you will protect him and grant him wisdom, give him guidance as he goes about his daily tasks. We know that we're all here for the purpose of making Grand Terrace a great place that it is and to continue to be that way for many generations. And, Lord, I humbly ask all of these things in your such precious name, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, a pledge of allegiance has a long and rich history. Please put your hand to your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Mark. Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Doug Wilson.
I am here.
Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
Present.
Council, oh, pardon me, Mayor Pro Tem Hussey.
Present.
Madam Mayor. Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum. Thank you. Do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda tonight?
No additions or deletions.
All right, thank you. So we have some special presentations tonight. We have three separate special presentations. The first one I will begin with is a presentation of designation of the city of Grand Terrace as a Purple Heart City. Now, do we have anyone here tonight with us that will be accepting this? Okay, so I will read, I will read our proclamation and then we will make sure that we send it to, to those that, that would, who made the request. So, "In honor of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, whereas the city of Grand Terrace and the state of California has a proud history of supporting its active military and veteran population, and whereas the Purple Heart Medal is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782, and whereas the Purple Heart Medal was the first American service award or decoration made available to all who serve and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. And whereas the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Chapter 2929, has selected the city of Grand Terrace as a Purple Heart City for its ongoing appreciation and support for all veterans, and whereas the city of Grand Terrace appreciates the sacrifices of our Purple Heart Medal recipients made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support they have earned. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Darcy Mcnebo, Mayor of the city of Grand Terrace, along with my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim the city of Grand Terrace as a Purple Heart City and encourage the citizens of Grand Terrace to show their appreciation for the sacrifices our Purple Heart Medal recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage, and to show them the honor and support they have earned." And it is presented this eighth day of November 2022, signed by myself and all the council members. So we will make sure that gets into the right hands, and we will move on to our next special presentation. And it's fitting that we're in November close to Thanksgiving because this is an opportunity for us to present certificates of recognition and thank those who volunteer in our community. We are so blessed to have so many volunteers that work in our senior center, our parks, our committees, and commissions. They do that for the best, you know, to give the best that they can to continue to make our city a wonderful place. And so what we're going to do tonight is we have some certificates of recognition for them, and we have a lapel pin that has our city logo on it, and I would like for my colleagues to, to join me out in front of the dais here. We will call each of the volunteers, we will call all their names, and if they're, if they're here tonight, we would like them to come up and accept their certificate and their lapel pin. Those who are not able to make it, I wonder if maybe the downpour maybe slowed some of them from coming tonight, we'll make sure they get their certificate and, and appropriate thank you. So we'll gather in front of the dais, we'll call their names. After the recipients have received their certificates, we're asking, please don't sit down. We'd like you to, to gather over here because we'd like to have a picture with you once we call everybody's name. All right? So we'll do that right now. All right, so the certificates are present, the city of Grand Terrace presented to, and then we have the, the volunteer opportunity that is listed for the appropriate volunteer. And the rest of the certificate says, "In appreciation of your outstanding dedication to the Grand Terrace," and that, in this case, it's going to be senior center, "promoting its programs and your contributions to the residents of the community. City Council of Grand Terrace thanks you and presented this day." And so we will go and we will name those that are part of our recognition for senior center. Diana Totten. Okay, so we thank Diana and we will make sure that we appropriately thank her and make sure she gets her certificate. Next is Lyndon Jones. And Cindy Elder. Is Cindy Elder with us tonight? Okay. We will make sure that Cindy is appropriately thanked and given her certificate. Our next area of volunteerism is the Grand Terrace Community Parks. So again, in recognition for volunteering your time and efforts to preserve and protect the city of Grand Terrace Parks for current and future generations. So it's wonderful that we have parks, but we really do appreciate the help that our volunteers give in making sure that they are functioning parks. And so we thank you all for that, and we will call our park volunteers. We have Valerie Adams. Thank you so much for your service, Lori. Thank you so much for your service, Christina. Jason Greeley. I didn't think I saw him. Edie Ademi. Excuse me, Eddie. Eddie Ademi. Thank you so much, Bobby. Bobby is also an unofficial citizen. Our next certificate of recognition is presented to those volunteers who helped with the Grand Terrace Community Days. So in recognition, in recognition of your outstanding contribution to the city of Grand Terrace and your dedication, insight, and devotion that you have brought to the city of Grand Terrace, the city council of the city of Grand Terrace thanks you. And so this is a, this is a big event, and we are fortunate to be able to be back in person with it. William Chuck Cecil. Thank you, Renee. Johan Gallo. Now I know he is on his way back from a road trip, so we will make sure Johan gets thanked. Thank you so much, Ed. Thank you, Christina. Becky Giroux. Next we'll recognize our volunteers who are, who put together our Light Up Grand Terrace event. In recognition of your outstanding contribution to the city of Grand Terrace and for your dedication, insight, and devotion that you have brought to the city of Grand Terrace, the city council of, city of Grand Terrace thanks you. And we will begin with Rachel Plum. Thank you so much, Rachel. Michelle Greer. I didn't think I saw her. Mary Beth Correa. And I don't believe she is with us today either. Julia Cook Fernkis. Thank you so much, Frankie. Byma. See, I always wanted to say Byma. Kristi Bowle. She is working, all right. Oh, yes, she is, she's at the poll. She's a poll volunteer tonight. All right, our next group of volunteers helps us with our emergency operations. In recognition of your role as an advocate for promoting, coordinating, and standardizing emergency preparedness and response on behalf of the city of Grand Terrace, city council of city of Grand Terrace thanks you. Thank you so much, Ralph. James Mahia. Fantine Imber. And Connie Parsons. This is our last one? Okay. The next is for our Park and Recreation Advisory Committee. So in recognition of your outstanding contribution to the city of Grand Terrace, for your dedication, insight, and devotion that you have brought to the city of Grand Terrace, the city council of the city of Grand Terrace thanks you. Terry Reagan. Thank you so much, Mike. Our next one is for the Historical and Cultural Activities Committee. In recognition for your outstanding contribution to the city of Grand Terrace and your dedication, insight, and devotion that have brought you to the city of Grand Terrace, city council and the city of Grand Terrace thanks you. Oh my goodness, thank you, Christina.
Nice to see you.
Oh my goodness, thank you, Becky. All right, our last group of volunteers that we will recognize tonight will be our Grand Terrace Planning Commission. Again, in recognition and honor of your dedicated public service and commitment to the city of Grand Terrace and its citizens. Thank you for your expertise and many contributions to the city's quality of life, presented this eighth day of November 2022. Tara Sessenya. I don't, I don't see her in here. Scott Mathis. Thank you so much, Ed. And Aaron Burian. the amount of work our volunteers do is just incredible, and as you see, we have many volunteers that are involved in not just one area of our city. So at this time, I, I just want to say one more time, I, words can't begin to thank you, but I also want to let my colleagues have an opportunity to say their thanks as well. Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I've been involved in something to do with the city for, I don't know, a long time, ever since we started the SER program with Joe and Helen up here and, and I, and, and, you know, Ed and Becky, Brian, you guys, you've been doing this for year after year, and Julia, and I just, I'm so impressed, you know, that you just, it's like a part of your life. And thank you so much because you enrich the entire community and everyone in it by your actions. So thank you so much to all of you volunteers, and, and, and we even have residents who volunteer outside of our community. You know, we didn't recognize them because we don't know who they all are. And I've met some over at the VA Hospital and some in the county, so, but thank you all to those of you who really make our city special.
Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, all of you that volunteer, and it's a lot more than a volunteer situation. You have a love for this city and you display it and you actually manifest it to, to everybody that's in the city, and it makes a difference. Back in 1978, when I first laid eyes on this city and started to construct the Heatherwood Project and the Foxborough Project, you could see that there was potential here, and when I moved here, I thought, hmm, this is a good place to be. This is a, this is a fine place to raise a family. And we've been here for forty, some odd, 43, 44 years, and it's still a good place. So greatly appreciate your efforts in making it that good place.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, everybody. And a little thing I had here is volunteers do not necessarily have the time, they just have the heart. Volunteers are the only human beings on the face of the earth who reflect a nation's compassion who reflect a nation's compassion, unselfish caring, patience, and just plain love in each other. So, you know, you guys, that's what it is, is love, passion, compassion, everything. You know, that's what makes a volunteer, that's what makes this nation great. That's what makes this city great, by every, all the unselfish time that you give, you know, from your families, even your families being with you as you volunteer. I know they're a big impact and they help all the time, too. But, you know, that's what, you know, so many people ask, you know, about Grand Terrace, hey, when we go and come back with this stuff? And I said, well, you know, we're having a lot of things that the volunteers do, but, you know, we need more volunteers, you know? And you guys, you know, you're the backbone of this city. You're the ones making the events good. You're the ones that are bringing peace and just camaraderie, family, atmosphere in this city. So God bless you all, thank you.
Councilmember Robles.
My turn. Yeah, I want to thank all of you too. There's, frankly, I've never really been able to interact with people and thank you. And you've done so much for us through the years, and all of you. I mean, you're balancing time with your family, and you're taking on, you know, the burden of events for this city and the stress that I know that weighs on you when you're planning and when the actual event comes. And it's you folks that make this city with the amenities that really embrace our citizens and bring joy. And I really want to thank you, and I wish you fabulous Thanksgiving.
All right. One more round of applause. I appreciate you all coming here so that we can give you our thank you. I know so many of you are involved because of your love for the city, and you don't do it for the thanks. But when we don't, when we don't express our appreciation, that really is a missed opportunity to continue to support the efforts that you do. And so thank you so much. We really appreciate you allowing us to thank you here in public. That's wonderful. So we have one more special presentation is...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I apologize. Can we pull landscape recognition?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll do that another night. That was our last presentation, and it's fitting that we land on, end on that. And as I said, I think it's fitting that we chose our November meeting to thank our, to thank our volunteers because we are getting into the Thanksgiving season, and it's time for us to think about those things in our lives that are, that are just so worthwhile and that we really, really appreciate. So with that, we'll move on to our consent calendar. Our consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They are to be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. However, any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar. We have had a request from Lewis Land Developers to remove Item Six from our consent calendar. Are there any requests from, for other items to be removed? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion for Items One through Five and Items Seven and Eight from the consent calendar.
Mayor, I'll move Items One through Five and Seven and Eight from the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Allen, the second by Councilmember Wilson. Are we ready? All right, let's vote.
And Madam Mayor, before we do, I...
Oh, yes, Mr. City Attorney, you have something from, you have something to read for me.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So we have the second reading and adoption of three ordinances on the agenda. I will read the titles of each. The first one is on Item Six.
Except that we're pulling Item Six.
Okay, yep, that's correct. So bring that back. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
So it's Item Seven, and there are two ordinances on that one. The first title is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, amending Sections 3.24.070, 3.24.080, 3.24.090, and 3.24.120 of Chapter 3.24 of Title III of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, thereby changing the thresholds for purchasing procedures, sale of surplus supplies, materials, and equipment, and city manager's authorization limit to $25,000, and adding Section 3.24.190 to Chapter 3.24 of Title III of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, which adds requirements relating to conflicts of interest and unlawful activity. The second ordinance is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, amending Sections 3.26.030A and 3.26.050E of Chapter 3.26 of Title III of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, which increases the city manager's authorization limit to $25,000 for contracts for public projects and maintenance as defined therein. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. So Item Six is the second reading and adoption of the ordinance of the City Council of Grand Terrace, amending Title 18 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, establishing art in public places requirements and a related environmental determination pursuant to Secu Regulation, Section 15061B3. And it was requested that we remove that one for discussion. And so do we have somebody here to discuss that with us tonight? Yeah, that needs to be turned on. Thank you.
Yes. Hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the City Council. My name is Wen Messner, and I am from Lewis Management Corporation. I'm also a project manager for the Gateway Specific Plan Project in the city. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to comment on Item Number Six of the consent calendar. And please accept our apologies that we were not present during the last meeting when the item was on the agenda. We were not aware that it was on agenda for public review. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask that the City Council consider lowering the required contribution values from developers for art, both in terms of cost of the art and in Lufi. This is for the draft Art in Public Places programs. The contribution values currently have been proposed at 1% for all new developments except single-family residential and half of 1% for single-family residential development. I want to be clear that Lewis fully supports the Art in Public Places program, and we strongly believe that having art in public places can greatly benefit the city and local communities. And as a company, we also have experience in installing public art in, at our development projects. And I've included some samples of the most recent art pieces that we recently installed in a different jurisdiction. And so just to show City Council that we are not new to providing art in public places for our development project. While we support the program, our concern lies with the required contribution values, and we find them to be substantially higher than the surrounding cities and nearby cities in the inland empire. The Grand Terrace proposed values are about two to three times higher than other cities in the inland empire. Cities like Loma Linda, or Rancho Cucamonga, or Claremont, they also have established Art in Public Places program and offer much lower contribution values. With that said, we would like to recommend the contribution values be simplified to a flat rate of $750 per dwelling unit for all of the residential development, regardless of attached or detached, our single-family or multifamily, and $1 per square foot for non-residential. And we would be more than happy to collaborate with the city to develop and adopt the Art in Public Places program that provides long-lasting value to the city and the residents. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity.
All right, thank you for being here tonight. Can I hear from staff? How did we determine our suggested pricing? And was that something that came out of the Planning Commission?
We took a look at not just inland empire cities, but cities throughout California. Art in public places is an evolving concept. It's not something that's been around for decades, and therefore, the pricing is all over the map. Loma Linda is a quarter percent for residential. As Wen said, Rancho has a 750, 750 per unit, and then some square footage. Indio has a really complicated program. San Luis Obispo, Cerritos, Downey are all at 1%. So there's a huge range in that. It really depends what, what the council feels is appropriate. We think 1% for a residential complex that's a major construction project is not unreasonable. If that's a $50 million project, we're talking $500,000. The difference between half a percent and 1% is a $250,000 delta over $50 million. So while it is real money, it's not make or break money for a project. And yes, the issue has gone through Planning Commission and was approved by Planning Commission at 1%.
All right, thank you. We have questions of staff or of the applicant? Councilmember Wilson.
Papa didn't raise no fool, so I'm kind of curious about the rest of the San Bernardino people. I noticed that you were selective in your spreadsheet there, and Rancho Cucamonga definitely has golden feet. So I understand using that one, and you guys have got a lot of experience in Rancho Cucamonga, but what about Redlands, and Upland, and Rialto, and Ontario, and Montclair? I mean, our city manager just told us it's all over the, all over the landscape in numbers. And did you, did I understand that it has a cap? Is that correct? Up to a certain value?
We do, we do not have a cap.
Okay, so it's just a straight half inch per valuation, or half a percent valuation?
It's very possible that these other cities do not have a requirement for residential.
Okay.
There's a lot of cities that have that requirement only for commercial, not for residential. I said, it is...
Well, while we're at it, let's try Newport Beach and Palm Desert.
Yeah.
Right?
It's everywhere on this.
Yeah. Unfortunately, there's, we're playing a catch-up game. And the reason why we're playing a catch-up game is because during the RDA, a lot of, a lot of people decided, a lot of communities decided it was a good idea to use RDA money to put all that art in public places. And the reason why I mentioned Palm Desert is because it's all over the place. But we didn't do that, and we put our stuff in other things. And so we're trying to play a catch-up game in relation to larger projects that have a fairly healthy impact on our neighborhood. And let's face it, you know, three or 400 units worth are going to be a pretty healthy impact. We're about, we're almost to the point of charging you guys rent, the way we're going. So in the meantime, I would like to know how much you think this is going to, a range of how much you think this is going to financially impact your project.
And we did, you know, just a rough estimate. And first, I'd like to answer your question on other cities in the inland empire. We actually reached out to the city of Redlands. While they have probably Art Committee and Commission, they don't have Art in Public Places programs or assessment on developers or any obligations for them to provide that on the development site. We also reached out to Fontana. They also don't have any program in place. And then, just trying to think of other cities that we have. And while I completely agree with the city manager, we did look into other cities outside of the inland empire as well. But we also found that some of these cities that provide, for example, similar valuation at 1%, they tend to be quite built-out, and a lot of their projects are not on the same scale as what we're currently proposing in terms of the number of units or the square footage of the commercial space. And so, you know, if they have an infill project of five units to 20 units or 50 units, as the city manager percent the valuation, their valuation could be $1 million, and at 1% of that versus ours, depending on the market, it could, could be $100 million. And the, our contribution for us or our art installation would be up to $1 million for an art piece. And like I said, we do not object to providing public art at all. We all for it, we're supportive of it, but we just ask that, you know, perhaps to reevaluate that value.
Let me ask you one more question. And you don't see any marketing advantage in this public art?
Not personally, and I don't know enough to say that, you know, there's been a study...
Since you might be able to capitalize on it a little bit.
Yeah, I think for sure it's part of beautification of a city. It's also an educational tool for art. And, you know, it could give the city of sense of place, unique identity in terms of the local. So, you know, like I said, we, we, we have pictures of the ones that we just recently installed. And so we have done these Art in Public Places before, and we're not against it.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. So what I wanted to... The cities that I would want to compare to are the cities that I would want ours to sort of follow that trend. Cities like Riverside, Redlands, that really have nice, unique, and so I guess you could say even more robust Art in Public Places program, as opposed to some of the other local cities in the inland empire who have more warehouses in public places. I don't want to emulate that. But the other thing that I noticed on here is I'm not real comfortable with having a flat rate, flat fee because of inflation. I would rather have a percentage. Even if we adjusted the percentage, I'd rather have a percentage amount because of that, because of that reason. So if we're going to take this into consideration, I would, that's one thing I would like us to consider. Thank you.
Council, or Mayor Protem? Questions?
Yeah, so, I don't know what the city manager already said, and I didn't hear him. This project that we have for Lewis, and how many dwellings we have, and if we keep our current rate, what would be the total income that, or the total amount of fees that the city will get?
But it would be 1% of the project. So as Wen said, if it's a $100 million project, it would be $1 million. At 1%, it would be half a million dollars at half a percent.
And if we do, say, $750, I mean, it'll probably be like, what, $150,000 we'll get? I don't know how many units we have.
Real down and dirty, let's see.
Mayor Protem, I could just add just a little bit. That value is just an estimate because the city program is 1% of the building valuation, which we don't receive the building permit valuation until we build the vertical structure. And so this is just a rough estimate of, you know, based on what Lewis has been involved in.
Well, I'm trying to think about how much fees that the city is going to be without compared to what the art is going to be.
So if there's 750 per unit and there's 750 units, it's 560,000. So it's pretty much, it's at the half percent range.
All right, thank you.
All right, further questions? All right, thank you. Is there any request to speak on this item? All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for their deliberations and determination of how they'd like to move forward. Councilmember Robles.
So when, so when I was, wasn't quite sure, I did some, some numbers, too. But what I'm trying to weigh against is we have the Planning Commission approve a recommendation. Then if we're going by the... Then if we're going by the 750 per units, it seems like a fair amount of art for the size of our city. But how could we frame this that we have an upper limit, but at our discretion, we can adjust it? That's what I'm thinking.
Do we have an upper limit on this?
No, we'd be creating one.
No, there's no upper limit.
So we wouldn't be, but the request is that we create one? Okay.
Conceivably, and I had my fingers in it, you know, $1.5 billion project, there was a significant amount of public art that came out of that. So we wouldn't want to necessarily cap because at some point, the project... You know, what if there's 10,000 units for argument's sake? Do we want to cap at some number for a project? And how do we define the project? So it should either be a percentage of valuation or a per-unit number, something that's easily calculatable and scalable.
So for clarification, we do not have a cap on this? We have what is represented in the table that was...
I was advocating. I wasn't saying we had a cap. I was saying we would create a cap.
Oh, okay.
There's a difference.
We do not, but yes, we could theoretically.
Councilmember Allen?
So the reason that I voiced my concerns about a flat rate fee is over the years that we've watched this development bounce around and planning, we've been told different amounts of dwellings that would be built there, and they would fluctuate from 300 to 750. And so that's why I was thinking that we might... I think I would prefer talking about a percentage of the BV rather than a flat rate because, you know, from year to year, until the project's completed, we don't know what they're going to put there and how much they're going to put there. Of course, you know, if they put 300 units, that's half of 750, you know, and so we get, you know, half. But... And that way, if we set a percentage, we won't constantly have to come back to council and have some sort of a discussion on raising the fee when inflation affects it.
Councilmember Robles?
Well, one of the ways of doing it is having a cost of an escalator in there to account for inflation. For example, there's mobile homes in Laguna Beach that you can buy a unit for 125,000, but the rent's 3,850 a month. And the escalator in there is a minimum 3% or cost of living, which was bad news for those people this year, 8%. So we could possibly have that units... I don't know, because I don't know what art costs, but it seems like a quarter of a million dollars is generous amount of art.
Do you have any idea how much that project costs to put in your company?
I cannot give you the exact amount. I don't have... We usually just have different ranges because there are different pieces that were installed. So I would say, you know, they range between like 100 to 150, maybe like closer to 200. We actually install a variety of different art pieces. There were several of them.
$100?
$100,000.
Thank you. That's what I understood you to say, but I wanted to make sure. All right, thank you. I think that our Planning Commission spent a lot of time on this, and they came up with the ranges for a reason. And I was not listening to the Planning Commission meetings, but I can't imagine that they came lightly to the decision about what they thought was best for our city with respect to this.
Is that a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we go on with the second reading as is. We brought it forward for our first reading, but it wasn't just in this venue. We had the Planning Commission take this up as a full item, and they had discussion and public testimony at that time. So it came to us as a first public hearing. We heard it. We listened to it. We decided to move forward, and this was our second hearing.
Second.
All right. So there's a motion by myself and a second by Councilmember Wilson to continue on with the second reading as is.
And Madam Mayor, I will read the title of the ordinance.
Please do.
It is "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, State of California, Finding Zoning Code Amendment 22-04 Exempt from SEQA Pursuant to Section 15061B3 and Amending Title 18 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code by Amending Chapter 18.06 Definitions and Adding Chapter 18.81 Establishing Art in Public Places Requirements." Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Our next item is public comment for items not on the regular agenda. Do we have any requests to speak during this time? Okay. So because of restrictions contained in the California law, and the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. And items may have a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comments, and an item may be requested for agendaizing for a future meeting. First speaker is Bobby Forbes.
Good evening. Thank you for the recognition tonight. I think the volunteers are what make this community so special, including all the people that work at City Hall and are in council. So first, I would like to thank the new Historical and Cultural Committee for such a great event. It was a really good turnout. We had great weather, and you all worked so hard. So big clap to you all. And second, I'm kind of out of commission right now. As you can see, I'm walking with a cane, but I'm still taking videos of TSG that operates 24/7. I will get them to you. And second, the band that played at the Historical and Cultural Committee event on Saturday, the Country Fair, is going to be playing at the Brandon Iron. So come on out, listen to some music. They will be there November 19th in the PM and December 17th in the PM. And how nice it is to get to go back out again. I haven't been there in years. You know, the first time I went there was 30-some years ago. Some of you might have been there a long time ago, too. But it's nice to get together once again and enjoy each other's company. And I will say, of all the volunteers, we had that group over there. I think there were only three phone numbers that I don't have in my phone. So if I don't have your phone number, please call me. Get hold of me so I can put your number in my phone so we can, like, communicate with one another because we all need help once in a while, and that's what it's all about. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Forbes. And that will conclude our public hearing. Excuse me, our public comment. We'll move on to our public hearing item tonight. Item nine on the agenda, "An Ordinance Amending Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to Adopt by Reference the 2022 Building Codes, 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, and the 1997 Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings as amended due to local climatic, geographical, topographical conditions and determining such ordinance exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3," presented by our building official, Luis Cardea.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Luis Cardea, city building official. So tonight, we will go ahead and perform the hearing for the adoption of the 2022 California Building Codes. So here we go. So this item supports item number four of our 2030 vision goals, which is to develop and implement successful partnerships. By implementing the 2022 California Building Codes, we will be preparing the City of Grand Terrace for growth, development, and prosperity by updating the city's development standards and codes. So I'll start off with a background. So the City of Grand Terrace currently enforces the 2019 California Building Codes in their entirety. So as always, City of Grand Terrace has always been adopting the California Building Codes in the past. But three years ago, we had adopted the 2019 codes. So now is the time to adopt the 2022. So every three years, each jurisdiction in the state of California is mandated to adopt the California Building Codes and make amendments that are reasonably necessary because of local climatic, geological, and topographical conditions. Modifications must be filed with the California Building Standards Commission in order to become legally effective by January 1st of 2023. The California Building Standards Commission publishes new editions of the Building Code with updates to the California Building Code as recommended by the International Code Council, ICC, which is the body that basically regulates certifications for building codes, products, as well as certifications for building inspectors, plans examiners, building officials. After adoption by the local governing board, which in this case is the city council, the City of Grand Terrace Building Division files modifications to the CBSC, the Standards Commission, and then enforces the Building Code over the next three years as mandated by the state until the next code cycle. Staff requests that a public hearing take place with the city council to discuss adoption of the 2022 California Building Codes in their entirety and as amended by the City of Grand Terrace Code of Ordinances. The Building Division also recommends adoption of the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code and 1997 Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings. The City of Grand Terrace has certain local climatic, geological, and topographical conditions, which we will talk about right now, which will require amendments to the 2022 California Building Codes. So the city currently, the climatic, geological, and conditions are... So we're located in Climate Zone 10. So we're more of inland, Southern California area. So our climate tends to be a little bit more warmer. So we're in the designated Climate Zone 10 as per the California Energy Commission. Seismic Zone D, so that is our earthquake zone. So, which means that we are... We were more likely to have more effects of an earthquake if it ever happens. Wind gusts up to 95 miles per hour. We are in category C, so there's categories A, B, C, and D. So category C is basically, we don't really have as many buildings together. We're not like in downtown LA where we have high rises. So usually when you're in a location where there's high rises, you have less winds affecting the building. That's not the case here. We actually have a more open space. So we don't really have those many buildings around here. Contains, also, we do have a flood hazard areas. So more notably at the northwest side of the city towards Terrace Avenue, actually, excuse me, Parsons Avenue. Contains, well, also contains very high fire hazard severity zones as well. So this is a map showing the high fire hazard severity zones per CAL FIRE. Apologize, this is a little bit too small, but here on the eastern side of the city, towards along Observation and then Vista Grande, and then also on the west side of the city towards Rosedale, you tend to have higher, more vegetation, more dense conditions for high fire hazardous conditions. So discussion, so the Building Division also recommends that the following amendments are included as part of the municipal code changes. The 2022 California Building Code to include the requirement of fire sprinklers under the following categories, but not limited to. First item is all new residential and non-residential buildings regardless of total building area. All new residential and non-residential buildings containing most occupancies listed in Chapter 3 of the California Building Code. All new residential and non-residential accessory structures containing construction type 4 and 5, which are known as heavy timber and light frame respectively, material exceeding 200 square feet. Existing residential and non-residential buildings undergoing through a remodel of at least 50% in total building area containing all occupancy types. Fire sprinklers will also be required for new accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs, where the existing main dwelling has an existing or new fire sprinklers installed. However, not for new ADUs where the existing main dwelling does not contain existing fire sprinklers as per SB 1069. For environmental review, the adoption of the proposed ordinance is exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3, as an item that has no potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. Public notice of this meeting for participation and attendance of this hearing was provided online via the city's website and published in the local newspaper, City News Group. And the economic impact, so adoption of the proposed Code of Ordinances will significantly save residents and businesses hundreds of thousands of dollars in monetary loss caused by a fire, including any associated indirect costs caused by such incident. Community safety impact, so it will significantly improve our safety for our residents. So the proposed ordinances will significantly increase life safety and will save many lives by preventing fire in occupied buildings. Also, our recommendation tonight is that staff recommends that the city council adopt an ordinance which adopts by reference the 2022 California Building Codes in their entirety, the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, the 1997 Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, and the Municipal Code of Ordinances. And that's it. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Okay. Before I go to my colleagues, I just want to clarify. Which of these recommendations are you saying that is mandated for us to do?
So the recommendation that is mandated is adoption of the Building Code in its entirety, the 2022 California Building Code.
Okay, and the other ones are just suggestions?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Wilson and then Councilmember Allen, questions?
Yes. I don't have any problem with adopting the California Building Codes and so on. But I do have a difficulty with one of the items, one of the maps, and that is your, what's been represented as the CAL FIRE map for the high fire zone is wrong. It's been wrong for a long time, and it's never been corrected. At a point, our own employee decided to straighten out some of the lines. The CAL FIRE map does not go on the west side of Observation Drive. There's a real reason for that. It's because there's a 100-foot fire break across Observation Drive. And the reason why that's there is because that is the California Water Resources Board line that goes from Silverwood all the way down to Paris. So it's a mandated 100-foot wide paving section. And for sure, that fire map does not go on the west side. That was a machination by a previous employee. So that map needs to be corrected before we adopt it.
Okay, any further questions? Councilmember Wilson? All right, Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. So my comments are related to this. I was not aware, as Councilmember Wilson is maybe pointing out here, that there's something incorrect with this map. I just remember that your predecessor that used to sit in your chair chief and your predecessor, Mr. City Manager, both, I asked them both from the dais more than two years ago, why we have areas of our city that have a very high fire hazard rating because that costs property owners more in insurance. And I was told at that time, oh, that's not the case. We don't have any of those here. No way, no way, no way. And I said, well, I don't know, you know, I'm seeing a map. And so it was going to get investigated. I never heard back. And so I'm hearing, I'm seeing now that we have, you know, 30% of our city is a fire hazard, a high fire hazard, you know? And I would just, I don't know, Councilmember Wilson, I want to ask you something. Do you think that it might be the vegetation that's on the east side of Observation coming into the city? There's some of the residences that are on those steep hillside homes. It's got some tall palms and a lot of eucalyptus trees around them, you know? And those are high fire hazard, those eucalyptus trees. So that, maybe they're looking at that. I don't know who made the map myself. I thought, I assumed it was CAL FIRE made it. But if you're saying it's a city employee that made it...
CAL FIRE made the original map. At a point, when they were trying to incorporate it in the last 1994 overall... At a point, when they were trying to incorporate it in the last 1994 overall revamp on the general plan, they didn't want to try to describe the cutoffs that were shown on the actual map. And so our community development director at the time drew in some new boundaries. It was convenient to draw in those boundaries rather than describe what the real boundaries were. And so I live on Observation Drive, and that's the reason why I was sensitive to it. Of course, I was the chairman of the planning commission at the time that it was done.
Yeah.
And I brought it up in record at that time, and it wasn't corrected then either.
Well, I'm aware that Observation has got that big water line underneath it.
Yeah, it's got a 100-foot wide easement. I think probably, answer your question, I think the material that you're talking about, it starts at the very top of the hill. And that's all roughage in there. As we know, our storm drain carries a lot of the rocks and debris and so on. And so the intention would be for the fire to run down, you know, to the west, and then it would start to catch fire. I don't know if the CAL FIRE people considered the fact that most of the roofs were fireproof.
Well, that, yeah.
So that would be a question.
I just wanted to make sure that our property owners are not paying insurance rates that they don't need to be paying. We need to get this high fire hazard, you know, done away with.
All right. So is this CAL FIRE map that is in front of us, did it come from CAL FIRE recently?
This is the CAL FIRE map from CAL FIRE. I pulled up a map just now, CAL FIRE's map on the website, which is identical. We do not generate that map. The city does not generate the map.
Okay. So this isn't, this isn't one that has been changed? Because I do remember there was one that was changed to make it simpler. But you're saying this came directly from CAL FIRE?
Yeah. And I'm, I'm seeing it, there is a run along Observation and the water line. But we, we will use the exact map from CAL FIRE because that's the one that is mandated by the state. We're not going to go add zones.
Okay. So you're saying that, that the state is saying we must accept this?
This, CAL FIRE determines high fire areas. We, we do not. County FIRE does not. That's, and it's determined by the risk, the terrain, not, not by the building materials or the building, because that, the fire area determines the building materials that are used there.
Okay. So if we don't, if we don't adopt this, for whatever reason, what does that mean?
If we don't adopt the, the Building Code?
No, the, the fire hazard section. If we say we're not, we're not adopting that as part of what goes in our code?
Has no, don't think it has any. There are specific callouts in the Building Code for construction in high fire hazard areas.
Okay.
So there would, there's different materials you have to use, roof vents and things. Stop me if I go way off. So there's different construction materials you have to use in high fire areas versus other areas, but it doesn't, we don't change the insurance rates. We don't drive the, so to your answer?
So if we don't have a map that shows where we are considering high fire danger areas for the purpose of construction?
We would then not be able to, to require those high fire area additions or modifications to buildings.
Okay.
Yeah. And to add to that, specifically, Chapter 7A of the California Building Code, that chapter is reserved more for high fire zones, such as the ones that we saw right now in the CAL FIRE map. So if we do not agree to that map, or, you know, let's say we don't adopt it, then really, we can't really enforce the Chapter 7A, which is more of a, like the city manager had mentioned, it's more for, more fire preventative measures. So you use material that is more fireproof, you know, Class A, tie proof, exterior siding that's more of fireproof material to prevent any, any fire damage to homes.
All right. Further questions, Councilmember Wilson?
Madam Mayor, we're approaching this backwards. We don't, and this is something that we have to make sure that we approach correctly because unfortunately, we can't bow down to everything that gets stuck on us. You know, we had no opportunity to actually review this plan. It was just given to us and said, this is what it's going to, this is what's going to happen. Now, we have a fire department representative here. But my understanding is, is that if we have a contract situation within this city, we've already remanded all our fire codes to a county situation that in most cases doesn't count in this city. But since we've already done that, that's, that's old business. The bottom line is, is that the Fire Protection Agency that is supposed to protect us, it's a contract, it's a simple contract issue. And this is what they feel like is their, you know, their protection medium or whatever. In the long run, though, we can't just stick something on a piece of paper and say, you know, the whole city's going to have to adhere to this. That's not the way this country works. We have to have a review process and so on before we agree to these kinds of circumstances, especially when it affects the pocketbooks of the cities, of the, the people in Grand Terrace.
So is your question, can we take this and have it go through?
I would make, I would make a motion that we throw out this map until we have something that actually addresses the issue. Doesn't mean that we can't adopt all the rest of the codes, it just means that this map is wrong and it should be addressed.
Okay. We are, we are in the, the point of this public hearing where we're asking questions, and then the next step is to open it to public comment, and then we come back for further deliberation, discussion, and a motion. So I appreciate your motion, but I'm asking for further questions right now before I open it up for public comment. Mayor Protem.
So on the CAL FIRE map, can the city request a modification on this map?
The cities, cities and individuals can request. I personally have requested a modification on the map on my house. It did not go far. But we can, we can request. I don't know of any city who's had that changed. And in, from what I understand, in the next cycle at CAL FIRE, the areas will be expanded, not reduced.
Yeah, because, you know, I understand, Councilmember Wilson, I'm just wondering if we could request a modification. I mean, nobody thought we could dislodge an RDA either, and we did. So I'm just wondering if we could request a modification on this CAL FIRE map if we're having discrepancies, and we think there's discrepancies with it? Because, yeah, the cost of everything was going to happen for the residents. So my concern too is if we're going by something that's not legit, or it's not legal, or somebody just decided to draw boundary lines, what's it going to cost the residents? So that was my question. If we could request a modification for this CAL FIRE map, if it is, how long would it take, or what would be the proper steps on that?
We can request a modification. I don't know what the timeframe is. It would probably, I'm guessing, months. But the cost to the citizens on changing the map, not changing the map, ignoring the map, is on the construction cost of whatever new construction or modification to their, their home. Whether or not we acknowledge this map or throw it in the trash can will not have an impact on the insurance rates. The insurance companies use this map as well from CAL FIRE to determine their insurance rates.
So on a new construction?
What we acknowledge is immaterial to the insurance company.
So on a new construction, either old construction, if somebody has to replace a roof in this area, do they have to buy by the new construction codes? Or can they still use the same materials that they used before? Or they have to upgrade their materials?
If you're in the, if you're in the fire zone, you would then have to follow the fire zone construction requirements.
So if they had a patch roof or something that they had to replace, they had to change everything out to that?
Yes. So any, a good example would be, let's say there's a resident that has wood shake shingles, and they want to remove them and replace the exact same material, they would not be able to do so. They would need to be based on the, the current codes, which is Class A or Class B roof material, but also more importantly, because of the location where they're located at. But, I mean, that's just an example, but yeah, just, you know, any material that's existing has to be brought up to current code.
So will it cost the residents probably double with this new material?
It, it really doesn't make of a, much of a difference. I mean, there are some costs, but really, it does not. The only, I would say the only time where there's more of a difference is when you have fire sprinklers installed. Nowadays, roofing material tends to be straight, you know, similar across the board. So if you go to Lowe's, Home Depot, to your home improvement store, you tend to see the same type of roofing material, same amount of price. Usually, the price doesn't differ that much. A good example would be 10, 15 years, that's 15 years ago, I believe, Cool Roof material used to be a lot more expensive. But nowadays, it's very hard to find material that's not Cool Roof in your local hardware store. So, because the codes eventually, you know, applies uniformly to all homes. So cost differential is really not there.
So if they want to install additional room, they have to put a sprinkler system in?
Well, not, not because of the map, but it would be because if they are adding or remodeling 50% of the existing footprint of the home, then yes. If it's 50% or more.
So under 50%, they're still?
They, you don't have, the residents, or property owners would not have to install any fire sprinklers. They would be exempt.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Robles?
Well, I was just going to say, I also live above Observation. Now, I've been in that house since 1985. It's a long time ago. But I remember, I actually read the documents, and I pay two fire insurances. It's not, not one. So there's an extra fire insurance. And there were no homes on the very top, you know, when I purchased them. So everybody has tile roofs and whatnot. I know, this is a sticky situation because, you know, CAL FIRE did the map, but maybe sometimes, you know, things that are going on half a century need, need another review. You know, because I know when we, working for government, we would always kind of get what was done before, brush it off, and reuse it. So it might be interesting to look at that.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
As I'm looking at this map and I'm identifying certain area properties that I recognize the locations of, you know, where I see these, the red and gray borders at. And so my question to you is, you know, because I see these, these lots, and I know the houses that are on them, and I know they're practically identical, and so I'm thinking, why is there's red, that lot red, and that lot gray? You know, so my question to you is this, you know, the council member here asked, or the Mayor Protem asked about modifying, can we get CAL FIRE to modify that? Well, what would we need to do to be able to modify the map? Would, I mean, is it have to do with vegetation? Or is it strictly the buildings themselves and?
It is more driven by the land form than by the vegetation, or the buildings have no driver at all on the map.
So it's just the topography?
It's more the land form is the driver, some on the vegetation, but from CAL FIRE, I said, I've, I've done this, this argument with them once. Regardless of the vegetation, the argument is the vegetation, whether fair or not, can grow back. The land form tends to drive which way the fire will flow and handle the wind so that it is kind of where they draw their lines, where they're assuming. And the reason it goes, I'm assuming why it goes past Observation, they, their argument is, and was in my case, that there are two or three rows of houses that they will lose, and it's built into that program that those are the two or three they need to protect. After that, the housing itself becomes dense enough that it slows the fire, slows that kind of spread. So for that depth is why we're seeing it go past, I'm guessing, past Observation. Is why it stops at my house, and the house across the street is outside the zone. So, and I'm sure this is the argument that we're seeing on Observation as well.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Further questions? All right. We'll open public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item? All right.
Insurance companies are already canceling the homes up against the Blue Mountain. I just closed a house in Redlands recently. It took them five insurance companies to get insurance on a house on Palo Alto out by Sunset, Yucapu Boulevard area. It was extremely expensive. Changing the map, I don't know if that would have anything to do with it. I doubt that it is because our city manager has said that they, CAL Trans and the insurance companies use the same map. But we're already being affected, and I'm not going to name the companies that are canceling, but many people that I know right up against the mountain have had their insurance canceled this, this year, 2022. So it's coming no matter what probably happens here tonight or with that map. But it's an eye-opener, no doubt, and it's a lot of money. And insurance, or interest rates and the price of homeowners' insurance are just so high, and we're about to see what's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Any other requests to speak on this item? All right. We'll close the public comment portion of our public hearing and bring it back to council. And, and I'm hearing the, the little bit of the discussion that went on during our question series, and I'm wondering if this is something that we want to proceed with tonight, or do we want to have more of an investigation and have it brought back to us? Councilmember Allen?
Didn't I understand in your briefing that this, is there, this has to be done by January? Is that correct, or something like that?
Ideally, done by January. However, worst-case scenario, let's say it's January 1st or January 2nd, 2023, the codes will still go into effect per California law. However, this is basically our opportunity to put any conditions, any amendments.
I see.
Also, I wanted to remind the council that this applies to, this applies to out the entire city, not just the fire zone. So the requirements for fire sprinklers, the proposed ordinance amendments does apply to the entire city, not just the, the fire zones.
And were you requesting any amendments or additions or changes to what is going to be required on January 1st?
So the amendments would be the requirement of installing fire sprinklers. So if there's any modifications of an existing building that's over 50% or more, remodels, room additions would require fire sprinklers. So that's basically what we're, we're trying to hopefully do is pass, you know, amend, perform this amendment where we can go ahead and have the fire sprinkler requirement. So just to, this is a discussion section, so to reiterate, yeah, so all new residential and non-residential buildings would require fire sprinklers. Currently, the, the code does require all new single-family and all multi, new multifamily buildings to have fire sprinklers. However, for commercial, non-residential, any buildings that are five dollars, less than $500 square feet do not have to have fire sprinklers. So that's something that we would like to do. So any new commercial buildings that are built, let's say, 3,000, 2,000 square feet, we would like to require fire sprinklers. Recently, there have been, there's new commercial buildings that have been built in the last two years that surprisingly are not fire sprinkled, and they're brand-new buildings, restaurants that have been built, and they're not fire sprinkled. However, we would like to include the requirement for that. Also, the second point would be for all residential and non-residential buildings containing most of the occupancies under Chapter 3 of the Building Code, which is kind of similar to the first point. And then all new residential, non-residential accessory structures that have wood-free material. So let's say, for example, you're building your detached garage that exceeds 200 square feet, would need to be fire sprinkled as well, since most fires typically start at the garage areas. And existing residential, non-residential buildings going through change of occupancy. So let's say, for example, you have an existing office building, and it's going to be remodeled, and there's a tenant improvement, and let's say it will be remodeled as a church, as an assembly use. We would require fire sprinklers at the time.
And that is part of our code, or that would be new code, or that's part of what's required beginning January 1st?
That would be part of our amendment.
In addition to what would be required?
Yeah. In addition to the 2022 codes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Don't we need to make a distinction so that people are not quite as afraid of the fire code or the fire sprinkler requirement? After over 5,000 square feet, you can use- you can use a 13D system. And a 13D system is a different situation than what we usually see, like in the malls or commercial buildings or so on. They're, they use PVC pipe, they use all kinds of different, different heads and so on. And they've got different pattern requirements. So they're really set up, something that was thought of back as, back as early as nineteen eighty, where the city of Los Angeles started to use 13D systems on garages. And it completely applies not to whether or not a garage is going to catch fire first, but because it's the use. When you, when you look at a garage, you think, well, gee, that's part of the house. It's not part of the house. A garage is a completely different use than a house. And that's why we used to have firewalls in between a garage and a house. Because, you know, it's, it's just as if you had a gas station next to your, you know, built onto your house. So anyway, but the 13D system is a, is a much more friendly and much more economical system.
Okay. So would that be a suggestion you would be making for the amendment that would go in there?
It's already part of the quote.
That's part of what the code would be in there? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Are we wanting to move forward with any of this tonight, or do we want to have it come back? Councilmember Allen.
Can we move, is there, can we move forward with it and get some, except for the map, and get some resolution on that? An answer on that?
Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, Madam Mayor. So my recommendation would be to move forward with the adoption of the codes, because all we are adopting are the codes. The map is going to be something separate. The codes basically implement what the map is. So my recommendation would be to move forward with the first reading with direction to staff to work with CAL FIRE to explore modification to the map. I think they would have to do a study, is my guess, to determine the appropriate areas where the existing map reflects what should be, the high fire zone. And to address your point earlier about the prior city manager not reporting back, maybe give a deadline to the city manager who at least report back on to any updates, maybe in early 2023. That would be my suggestion.
Okay, so I'll.
If I may, wait, one more point, is timing. So right now, we're having the first reading. Second reading would be December 13th, I think it is. And then it would be effective thirty days later. So we're looking at about January 12th, 13th, something like that, when it becomes effective. If we were to push this ordinance back to December or later, then we're pushing the effective date of these amendments that staff is proposing till a later point in most likely February, March. So just something to consider.
Okay, then, so I'll make a motion. I mean, staff recommendation is a whole paragraph long. So I'm just going to say staff recommendation with a timeline of the second meeting in January for the answer back on the CAL FIRE map.
Second, under condition that we are pulling the map, the mapping question.
That's what I was talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we, but the recommendation is adopt the, you know, wait for the reading and introduce the proposed ordinance, adopt the codes.
Right. So to clarify, we're not necessarily adopting the map. The map has already been adopted by CAL FIRE.
Right.
It's just a reference document at this point. We're only adopting the codes that will implement.
Isn't it an exhibit, though? It isn't, it's considered an exhibit, correct?
It is.
Okay, so we're pulling that exhibit out of the documents.
Well, again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that, because again, that, that's a document that's established by CAL FIRE, so we wouldn't have anything at that point reflecting what the high fire zone is anywhere in the city.
Well, let me just ask a question then. Is this in accordance with our general plan? Because I don't believe it is.
That I would have to defer to.
The general plan has a map in it, and it does not extend down to the, to the observation units.
I would have to look at the general plan map, but I, I can't.
Can't adopt something that isn't in accordance with the general plan?
Well, let me, let me, I made the motion, and we have, the codes are going to go into effect. And so if, if our general plan is in contradiction to the state codes, then it's our general plan that would have to be looked at, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Because we can't contradict state, we can't bend state codes. But I don't think that we have that issue. I think that what we're here to do is just to pass these.
I think the question is, is whether or not the fire department with CAL FIRE has the authority to mandate a, a map on the city of Grand Terrace. So we don't know that, so I, I don't think it's, it's good for us to do that.
That's why, that's why I said, suggested that in the motion, that the map not be, well, it's, it's only a reference point. So by the second meeting in January, we'll have that, report back on that issue.
Yeah, we'll provide an update.
Right, an update on that, but the codes.
So your motion is to approve the code as recommended by staff?
Yes.
And then we're not voting on the map at all?
No, there's nothing to vote on with it. It's only a.
Right, so, and he's giving direction for staff to come back with a report?
Correct.
So that can be taken up later? Okay, so that's the motion?
It is.
Second concurs.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson. Any further discussion or clarification needed at this time? All right, seeing none. Mr. City Attorney.
I will read the very long title. Okay. The title is "An Ordinance of the City of Grand Terrace, California, Amending Title 15 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, Thereby Adopting By Reference the 2022 California Building Code Series, Including the 2022 California Building Code, 2022 California Existing Building Code, 2022 California Residential Code, 2022 California Electrical Code, 2022 California Plumbing Code, 2022 California Green Building Standards Code, 2022 California Historical Building Code, 2022 California Mechanical Code, 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, and 1997 Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, Making Certain Amendments to Such Codes as applicable due to local climatic, geological, and/or topographical conditions, and determining thereof to be exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guideline, Section 1506-1B3." Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Just a quick look, as far, as well as I can tell on the phone, the map and the general plan and the CAL FIRE map appear to be the same.
All right, thank you. But you'll come back to us with a longer report.
We'll come back with a confirmation and an update from CAL FIRE.
All right, thank you. So we have no unfinished business, no new business, so we'll move on. Request for future agenda items. And so remember, under this section, pursuant to requirements of the Brown Act, no items may be considered other than those listed below. And it's, we're just determining whether they'll come back to us for a, for an actual discussion and deliberation. So Councilmember Allen has asked for us to consider a review and update of the City of Grand Terrace 2030 Vision and the 2014 to 2020 Strategic Plan. Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. So I have my copy. I keep it with me all the time. And I know each of you have one also. And I don't know if you've thought about this or not, but it's going to be 2023, and this thing expired in 2020. And you know, the thing is, is that we ask interviewees for commission posts, positions, and other things, we ask them questions about this, about an expired plan. Now, we do have our vision, which is our 2030 vision, which was started in 2012. But we have an opportunity now to
I move.
Put this, put this city on a path, you know.
I move the item to be on the next agenda.
Second.
All right, so motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Mayor Pro Tem Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
We will move on to council communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Hey. Thank you, Mayor. Since the last council meeting, I attended the, on October 26th, I attended the Colton Joint Unified School District Community Cabinet Meeting. And I've been a member of the community cabinet since I was elected to the council in 2018. And it's a great organization for business leaders, community leaders, school leaders, parents, students. They all come together to work together to try to improve the climate of the school and move the school forward and the student's body. At our community cabinet meeting we were at in this past, when we had, the superintendent Medina introduced these student advisory councils to, to us. Each of the high schools, that's Bloomington, Colton, and Grand Terrace High School, has a student advisory council for Superintendent Miranda, and they meet with him periodically to advise him on, on the climate of the individual schools and also strategies to overcome the challenges that students are facing in their, in their lives, you know, and to improve the, their academics. And I was pleased, actually afterwards, to meet with the advisory council from our high school here in Grand Terrace. And in particular, I want to give a big shout out to Senior William Lucas I met there. He is on the advisory council. He's a student here.
Excuse me. We have election night, and we still have a closed agenda item. So I was wondering if we might just defer this part of the agenda and move on?
I'll, I'll be done soon.
Okay.
And so William Lucas, he's a lieutenant governor with the Kiwanis Key Club International that's being sponsored over the Grand Terrace High School by the Colton Kiwanis Club. I'm particularly fond of Kiwanis because they're very focused on the youth in our, in our schools and in our communities and helping them. And I look, Lieutenant Governor William Lucas there over at the high school is, I see him doing great things in the future, because he's a real leader over there. Last Saturday, we had the Country Fair. I attended that, and that was a great event. Anybody who, who didn't get to attend that, you missed out. I think it was the best one we've ever had, especially the band. Man, what about that band? They were great. And the Killin' Time Band. And what's unique is that our code enforcement officer, her husband plays in that band. And I thought that was, that was a big bonus for us. But thanks to all those vendors, thanks to the people that came out. There were some beautiful items there for sale, and I look forward to, to the next event that we're going to have, Light Up Grand Terrace, on December 1. And along with that, some upcoming events. Oh, Chamber of Commerce meeting is tomorrow morning at Woody's at 8:00 a.m. If you're interested in the business community, business climate in Grand Terrace. Look forward to seeing you there. Veterans Day coming up Friday. Hey, see you at, at the Freedom Wall and Light Up Grand Terrace on December 1. That's our next big event. So I hope to see you all there on my birthday. And I wish everyone happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Happy Thanksgiving, and I thank all those who serve on state councils, as well as the, the members of the staff for all their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Elby Robles.
Ditto to that, and thank you for a great country fair.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Bill Hussey.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving to everybody who's coming up, and you have a blessed holidays on that and time with your family. And also to my fellow veterans, you know, not a happy Veterans Day, but I have a blessed Veterans Day. And also, Mayor, you know, just wish you luck too, and you know, the upcoming election, you know, that, you know, it's all the city of Grand Terrace, and you know, please get out there and vote. Your vote counts. And just God bless, and thank you, city staff, for everything you've done today.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And so just two meetings. We had, I had Omnia Board meeting and a SBCTA Board meeting. So just, just the updates. We have a connect plan update, which is something that's been funded through the state, the California Air Resources Board. So they've done some surveys. They've found out what makes sense for, for residents, and they're moving forward with that. And then also, they are doing a customer satisfaction survey for their regular services. And we've had an increase in, in feedback satisfaction by our riders. They are working to bring back the, the convenience of the bus fare, you know, is one that goes on. But what they need to do is, is really increase the number of buses that run. And they are working on finding a way to, to provide more responsive bus service. SBCTA, the two items that are relevant to us in this region was, we approved a release for proposals for construction management services for the Mount Vernon Avenue Improvement Project at Interstate 10. And that will change things dramatically for people that travel locally on Interstate 10. And then also, a release of invitation for bids for the Interstate 10 eastbound truck climbing lane. Okay, so that will wrap up for me. Mr. City Manager, do you have any communications for us?
Yeah, very quickly, thank you very much for everybody that came out and made the trunk-or-treat and the Country Fair so successful, both events. It shows a great deal of input and activity from the community. As Councilmember Allen said, Light Up Grand Terrace, December 1st. So we're, we're looking forward to that. And thank you from me to all the veterans who have helped make this country what it is and preserve the great country that we have. So thank you. We owe you a debt of gratitude. And the lieutenant has a brief comment he'd like to make to you.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Just a quick announcement. I have it up on the screen here. We've talked about it, but now it's, it's official. We have our catalytic converter etecat program. It's going to be on, see if I can find the date there. 19th, I believe? There it is. Okay, the 19th, thank you. A little blurry from here. Catalytic converter thefts are on the rise, and we are anticipated to beat last year's numbers by quite a few this year. So in conjunction with the Board of Supervisors' new adoption of a county ordinance, which will make unauthorized possession of a catalytic converter a misdemeanor. If we have folks here in the city who participate in this, get their catalytic converter etched with, with either a VIN or a plate number that we'll put on there, and we find somebody in possession of that catalytic converter that is not the owner, then we can take them immediately to jail, and it'll help us with the prosecution efforts afterwards. So there's information on the flyer there. It's on the city's webpage. It's also all over our social media. It's on the city's webpage. It's also all over our social media. We, we hope that, that as many people sign up as that as possible. We want to make it a blowout, and if we need to, we'll do it again. But I hope to see everybody out there.
All right. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Lieutenant Lane. So we have one item for closed session tonight, so we will be recessing to closed session for a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section Five Four Nine Five Seven Point Six. Agency designation representatives, Conrad Bolowich, City Manager, and unrepresented employee. So this is why I don't, I don't know why I have a property negotiator. We're having a labor negotiation, sorry. So I have the wrong code in front of me. But we will be, we will be in closed session on a labor negotiation. Unrepresented employee is Adrian Guerra, City Attorney, and our representative is Conrad Bolowich, City Manager. And so if you're not with us when we return, we will, we will be closing our meeting in memory of Mark Civicota. Please keep he and his, and his family in your prayers. And our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at six PM. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. So we are in recess. I'd say we'll reconvene to open session. The council met and closed session, Conference with Labor Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code Section Five Four Nine Five Seven Point Six. Agency designated representative, Conrad Bolowich, City Manager, and representative employee, Adrian Guerra, City Attorney. We, we did not take any reportable actions. We did give direction to staff, and so at this time, we will adjourn. Remember, we are closing in memory of Mark Civicota. Our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at six PM. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Happy Thanksgiving. We are adjourned.